Our pledge to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands is one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jenny's unable to be here tonight, so I'm gonna kinda help her in order to do a local Dan?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yes.
And then myself is here. Do we have any guest speakers? Before we do anything else, I want to remind anybody that has any kind of audio, video equipment, video in particular needs to remain in the box over there and face towards the table. Only have the trustees in the picture. If there was a motion to move on that last area.
I think there was.
If not, I mean also make another motion that all video recording equipment, just can take video footage and need remain in the designated area, which is the box over there, and needs to be on the trustees', no video recording of anybody in public.
No, second.
Local, Dan?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Same.
Dan?
Yes.
Alright, we'll skip ahead real quick to the road bids. We got one road bid, the Arapides Road Bids. Without an Arapide, if anyone wants to see that, let's hear it.
I'd like to see it.
Let me try get it back. We have one bid turned in from Small Basketball.
You know, you can check the box today.
Yes, you can either.
Do it at the next July meeting. Is that, they won't set to, will be after the July 28th?
We can't, right, can't set any bid until after you receive the money.
Okay. That'd be after, in, in July?
Our meeting in July is going to be loaded.
Just making sure. Get the, come on, get your hand.
This is already on, this is already on. There, please, see the beta. Josh, can you make copy of that? James will be here for Small's, or anything you wanted to add, pump this dial in. Alright, well, we'll just go ahead and set the data. The July meeting that we'll discuss. For the, if we only got one bid, we can put out for this again, if you guys want to do that, or we can just review this one, here, Saturday, Jeff.
Oh, we got, can we award the last one month? Or, where we have our money, but the last week.
By this month? Next, July, yes. Yes, so we can award it next week.
So, you're just awarding next week?
Well, it's not gonna get copies, but all of us. We might just come back next month, we'll come back July, or well, beyond July, so then. Correspondents? Leave a notice for the ad paper. Insurance cards were beautiful. That's all. Anything else?
There's a letter get on the table from the operation, I don't know, having a chance to read that, probably question copies of receipts and invoices finalized. It worked. I don't have written down the next meeting you guys set? Set? What is it? Is it the third Tuesday?
Yeah, it's the 16th.
Sixteenth, that's what. Okay, that's what it is, okay. Jenny asked for copies of everything, just, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take care of them.
Is that correspondence he's presenting? Because if it is, then we should read it.
No.
So we know what it is, instead of probably reading it something.
This is part of the segment, and here in the dish manners cooperative, is to be provided with a written report of the use of grant funds, which includes the following. In narrative outlining, what was accomplished by the spending of certain funds and information to substantiate the funds awarded, such as deposits and invoices, pictures of equipment purchased, or a statement describing specifically how the funds were used, and a statement certified in the deal when completed, with the terms and conditions in writing. This is a testament by a responsible officer, such reports to be furnished by the end of fiscal year.
Are you gonna take that with you?
Yeah.
Can I get a copy of that, maybe also?
Sure. Seems to be an issue a lot with the copies of things, is the pension still on the copy machine? Because I'd like to move the motion and remove the copy machine, this boxers, house, to the township, but we don't have these kind of issues anymore.
Maybe after a meeting, make a copy of that.
Sure, after meeting, or they, it'd be a whole lot easier than having to struggle with this.
Alright, any other correspondence?
No, second motion.
Alright, any other correspondence? The reports, safety. Fire something for that. Zonie?
I have nothing for this month.
Under Zonie, several months ago, I asked for some records. Did you get a date on that?
Did you give me exactly what you want?
Yes, I did.
No, you did not. I had yet to receive anything telling me exactly what you want.
Specifically, are there any open files right now of unresolved issues with Zonie?
Define your open files.
Anything that's not been resolved.
She gives us all papers, same thing.
You received copies of every single thing that I brought to you. Automobiles, also, for the jumps, the violations and everything, you received every copy. So, yes, you have. Every meeting I gave them to, when I had violated.
I actually also asked for a copy of the tape and the last jump car meeting, yet to get that. I've seen it, it's listed online now, but the link doesn't work, so the file's still not, so I still don't know whether to get, assuming you were booked here, at the last jump car meeting. I don't have any meeting minutes, I don't have any tape, nothing.
Tremendous.
It's irrelevant. Fact of the matter is?
After duty, first the ten meetings.
Fact of the matter is, I have every right to that information, it's public information. Everybody has a right to it, and I certainly do too.
Well, you've received all the records from me, as they came in front of you.
She's, she passed me around with every one of those.
I got a copy of that.
I got a copy of every one of them.
Every single one.
So what's your response to what file?
You received your.
What issues are still open files? What has not been resolved or followed through to the end?
Everything you have hasn't been resolved yet. There you go.
We got them, Jeff.
We're still waiting on prosecuting attorney.
For what? Which issues?
You brought, it was sitting right here at this table, was brought up to you. On Livingston and Step. You have those files in your hands also.
So you're telling me that there are open files with Livingston and Step, they're not resolved yet?
You're right.
And you're saying that that is in the hands of the prosecutor?
Prosecuting attorney. So I can't do anything, can I?
And what are we waiting for from the prosecuting attorney?
Her to contact us? She's a very busy woman, that's what she keeps saying.
Nothing else for Zonie?
No, I didn't have anything to serve her.
Thank you. Zoning board? Zoning appeals?
Then that's what I'm asking.
Comprehensive plan? Park committee?
Is that a report for the board, or should we get this?
Township building bookings, June, June 2nd, June 19th, and June 23rd, we're all, I'm sorry, one was $225, one was $20. July bookings were July, I don't know, July 5th, 6th, 7th, and 13th, there's still prices on those. Will be putting in bricks before Labor Day, all bricks are in, we have ordered, and supplies, any pimp towels, rubber cranks, all bricks cleaner, toilet bowl cleaner, just there. And there was, these must be the July ones that are coming up. Nothing from June. Twenty from June, there's the 220, the 225, the 20 from June. All that good, Jenny? Unfinished business, road bid, did that, we went to that, that's how we review it. I had unfinished business with the park mall project, got finished, we did that, thank the volunteers that came and did that, we had a big group of people again, came and helped, spent $337 on malls, which was twelve giving yards, most of the way, we spent a few hours down there, spread it out, very thankful for the volunteers to give them help, I'm just kinda disappointed that nobody from the park committee came and helped, it is what it is, so, I want to thank the people that did some unfinished business.
No, what's going on?
Uh, under unfinished business, yeah.
I'm gonna need that to support, we'll have to provide copies of whatever that is, should also include any expenses or payroll that was put out, ready to do it.
Approximately, right around $1,287.
How much did it cost to take that out?
Take it out, $1,287.
Okay, so, what?
Zero. Took nothing, took nothing to take.
Did we not pay wages?
They didn't pay attention.
Yeah. Actually, took it for it.
We just paid, take it out, the answer is zero.
Okay, the zeros are taken out, $1,287, put back here.
Clean up the mess.
Clean up the mess, I still say, Mr. Porkin, you should make one.
Again, we need to get a final for actual seats and everything, so we finalize this very promptly.
Send me a note to Jenny and ask her for her seats, she'll also get a copy of that, she sure got sent that, actually.
Sitting here.
Instead of you.
Says laundry touch department day, and that's why we're in the box, sitting here at night, so.
I have a question, Mr. Park.
Go ahead.
This grant report that Mr. Porkin brought up, um, the comment was made that to get with the court, then she would write up a report and get the receipts and everything, correct, for this grant?
Yeah, then, I read it, because I read the court department, we all heard.
What do you need, the receipts, right?
Yeah, we need receipts and everything, all the expenses to show that we did, we were supposed to.
So he's gonna ask Jenny for the receipts?
Yeah.
That's, that's what we need.
And I heard a report that you wrote that.
Says it has to be within a year, we can bring it to the next meeting for the time, we don't have to mail anything until everybody looks at it.
The park committee.
I, I understand the report is to be written out. My question is, why would Jenny have to write the report? Why wouldn't the park committee write the reports, present it to Jenny, let her review it, and decide that that's appropriate to go forward, since it has to go through official? She's not the one that requested the grant, she's not the one that got the grant.
That's true.
Mr. Porkin's the one that got the grant.
That is true.
So we should advise, like, I'm speaking, I got authority, and, oh, it's me, you're mine, you're mine.
Once you say it's not a problem at all, I hear you.
I'm gonna finish, you're rude, I'm taking this.
Go ahead, go ahead.
So don't you feel that Jenny should review it and the park committee should write it up?
Yes, they should be, they're gonna write it up, correct.
Thank you.
They need to request the receipts, get the receipts, they can write the report, bring it to the table, and we can all review it.
It's a non-issue.
No, we're all reviewing it.
It is an issue. It's been an issue.
It's not an issue.
It's an issue.
That's why, that's why it needs to happen.
I've already said.
Of course, everybody has personal, and you know that.
I've stated that's a portion of how it happens. It's not a problem, it's a requirement, so we will be doing it.
Don't be sending anything along your own, right here, yeah.
There's no code conduct up here. Mr. Porkin, interrupting?
You don't tell me how to operate my seat, and I don't tell you how to.
You're interrupting me now, I'm interrupting you.
Don't be sending anything along your own, like you did before.
Isn't that rude?
I didn't send paperwork, you know, my own, Mr. Park.
You did.
And I didn't come here to argue with you, I came here to conduct township business, so let's keep it professional, see?
That was random, came to front of the board, you never sent it in? They did not.
Are you gonna start your hunk drama again?
No, I'm asking you a question, you wanna be professional, talk to me or not?
I think that we discussed it, and we are gonna have it at the next meeting, and there's nothing further needed.
Answer my question.
It wasn't drawn before the board.
So why, why would you say it was? It was not?
Don't put words in my mouth. Like I said, I conduct my business my way, you conduct it yours your way.
You make sure when that gets written up, it comes in front of the board, okay? That's what it needs to do.
We already discussed this.
Make a motion.
Already discussed.
You don't make a motion, it won't go in front of the board.
It's a non-issue, it's been discussed.
It will come in front of the board.
Make a motion.
A non-issue.
Do you have any other unfinished business? Do you have any unfinished business?
Yeah, I've been contacted quite a bit lately, and people.
I don't know how, I can't get a hold of you.
People have been concerned about why they can't get meeting agendas, or promises, or anything that type of thing. So if somebody could make some kind of effort to get that done, best to think he's hit now is a meeting agenda from last June, so it really doesn't tell them what's, what's on the agenda for current topics. They should have meeting come over here, we have the system, 2013. We've got a website that can be updated too.
Act 12, before 14, you're good.
Seriously? You don't understand, you have to, what?
You got it.
No, I didn't.
You're right, you don't understand, you don't understand, Jeff. Do you have any other unfinished business?
So you agree?
It's a non-issue, Jeff, it's a non-issue, okay?
Dan, how do you feel about that?
I don't see how people contacted you when I tried for two months.
I'm talking about the agenda being on the website in advance, so people can know what topics would be.
Was a motion made and put out?
Do you have anything to say about that?
No, it can be your own.
That a motion needs to be made.
We have a meeting, and.
That comes to me, make it, make it happen.
That, that's important.
Dan, ask your question.
I have an opportunity to bring you forward, so.
Go ahead.
Well, I just, I don't know how all these people get a hold of you, when I tried for a couple of weeks to get a hold of you.
You know where I live, Dan. We're at a meeting tonight, what do you want to talk about? What's your township business issue that you want to discuss?
What I want to discuss with you was Jenny printed me out a copy of the specs for the chip and seal, I mean, a bid sent out.
Right.
And you, you took it.
I have a copy of it?
Yeah, you got.
She gave it to me in the last meeting.
She, she gave you my copy, and all I was wanting to know, if you was done with it, I would like to have it back, so she didn't have to print out another.
Well, you know where I live, Dan, you've been there before. If you have trouble communicating, you know where I am.
I got a telephone, and I kept calling.
How does it feel, Dan? For ten years, I've tried to communicate with you, and that's how I get a response. I've been available, if there was an emergency or something needed, you've been there before, you know where to go.
I've been there.
I got a telephone, it costs money to rent an air gas, and all I'm gonna do is push a button, and call, like everybody pushes a button for you.
Uh, that's not the way it's happening. I don't get calls, I don't get communication. It works two ways, Dan.
You just said it always falls.
So we get back to that.
Concomitant, did you get that on recording?
Are, are you questioning the fact that people contact me? Are you thinking about this thing?
Why don't you, why don't you return your calls when people call you?
I do return my calls when people call me.
Dan, I told you.
I told you, if you've got township business to be done, bring it to the township tape. If you've got something personal, drive up my driveway, knock on my door, and let's pop, okay?
So, I have a question, so you guys only work this day?
Excuse me, you don't have it for.
Only this day? Because that's what he's saying, you guys are not just getting it outside of this day, this hour.
Is she running a meeting for you?
Is that what I'm hearing?
That's what you're hearing.
So I hate you guys for one freaking day, at least that lazy man right there, because I know who you're out working.
I've seen it.
But I've never seen that lazy man.
She had a legitimate question.
So she's running the meeting?
She had a legitimate question.
Not running, reading, interrupting you. Which is like, you interrupt me.
So you recognize I have the table, and you're interrupting me?
You gotcha.
The only time anybody sees you or hears from you.
At least you know what you're doing. At least you know what you're doing.
Alright. The only time anybody sees you or hears from you, is at the, is at the business meeting.
That's not, that's not accurate.
Yes, it is.
The park staff.
Can I make a statement?
Quit, quit talking about the comment, and go ahead and fish.
Who's running the meeting? You or me?
Well, I can't really tell, because you're letting me.
Let me tell you, let me tell you, let me clue you in, Hunter Brother, I am, okay? Do you have a question?
Yes. Taking down trees, I seen you sitting in the car, Jerry Stapp taking pictures, I didn't see you offer, I didn't see you offer, these people, lives out here on Brooklyn Woods, they have roads closed, we had to get ambulance in there, park, the people.
I didn't see you, Jeff. I never see you when there's an emergency, but what is a problem, you can't offer them to you. Besides that, did they put a lock on the gas, so I couldn't load the park on the gas tank?
Yeah, who changed the lock?
I thought the key. Nobody changed their locks.
Well, it was two changed.
What's that key for?
I went and cut the lock off the gas tank, because I couldn't get into the gas tank, and the lock on the building over there was different, so I got a package of three locks, and.
Somebody changed the locks, and nobody had a key. I, I didn't change it, I didn't have a key.
So we can go, one key fits both locks now.
Somebody must have switched something, because when things were sale out here, I saw a lock on that, and I wanted to see if I had a key to it, because I thought I had it sold to the guy, and one of my keys to one of the locks opened, so somebody took a key out of something and put it on the chain out there.
I thought it was.
That's probably when it got mixed around.
Well, they did call you about that? They, they called you about it?
The one I showed you, is when I happened to be down here and I showed you. So, you know, what, any updates on that? Did you get $600?
We're not done yet. We're not done yet.
Where is that gonna be? Unfinished business?
We're not done yet.
I'm asking where it's gonna be?
We're not done yet, okay?
I think this needs to be evaluated by doctors, if he's capable of even running, then it'll stay inside.
You know, you wanna talk about communication. How about when we did a cleanup with the Boy Scouts, and you being fed out here with the vest, and you had some workers that were looking for him, found you, and you couldn't even talk to them, to let them know that you had the vest?
I'm here to conduct.
Is that correct or not?
Here you are, here you're drawn.
That's a no point.
It's not drawing, Jeff, it's the truth.
It's not the truth, it's your version of the truth.
Jeff, tell me what happened that day.
You called him a thing.
Just wait a second, point alert. Are we now on public comments?
No, tell me what happened.
What are we doing?
Business.
We're discussing.
You're discussing.
Charles from Billy and Bonnie, get up there and help him, you couldn't get here, or Dana couldn't get here, we come down, couldn't find your vest, our hall keys, take the rest, do what you can do, look for it, the ref, the tractor come off the trailer, Jeff sitting in the middle of the road, taking pictures, Bonnie said, Jeff, you got the vest, get up at him, wind on his window, we turned around on the back, tried to get ahead of us, over a Philly road, we drove in, we got the kids, and then he come dragging in the vest.
See, even in communication, with these two gentlemen, to let you, let them know that you had a safety vest?
The drama continues.
Which could put many kids in, in jeopardy.
Jeff, you're real careful.
Make up, make up those stories, go ahead.
It's not a story.
Don't worry, Jeff.
That's the truth.
You can make a note of it.
What's your version? Tell me your version, tell me your version.
Doesn't matter.
Let me hear your version.
I'm not here.
Come on, lay down, let me hear it.
Keep it up.
Lay down.
How much attention do you want?
Lay down, let me hear your version of the story.
There's no point in it.
What do you mean, no point?
I was there for the entire thing, assisted the scouts from the beginning to the end.
Can you hold yourself down for your own actions?
It's about it.
He was late getting there.
You was there on time?
No, you wasn't.
I know more about it than you do.
You got it on the screen?
I started that program with the scouts, and my son was in it.
Yeah.
And it's continued.
So, so all the year, the few years, you never sat at this table? You never showed up to pick up trash?
So.
You weren't doing that. Pat yourself on the back, Jeff, pat yourself on the back.
He needs to ground.
No, it's a pattern.
Yeah, I just don't get it, why couldn't you communicate?
You want to discuss that matter further, why don't you put it on the agenda?
No, we discussed it, why couldn't you?
And then when I have all the Boy Scouts come in?
Who's talking?
Are you asking me, do you want to answer, or you just want to get it there?
I want you to listen to my words, I want you to listen to my words. Why couldn't you communicate with these two gentlemen, when they talked to you and asked you if you had a safety vest? You're putting, how many kids were there, Jeff? Twenty, fifteen?
I'd say twenty, twenty-five.
You're putting twenty, twenty-five kids in jeopardy?
No.
Because they were wearing a safety vest?
That's not correct. That is not accurate.
Are you serious?
Yes, I am serious.
You're saying that they never stopped and asked people about the vest?
I'm saying there were no children in jeopardy.
Did they stop?
They all had safety vests.
Did you, did they stop and ask?
They drove up to me harassing me. Somebody drives up next to me in a township truck, that has a history of harassing me and doing damage to my property. I am not gonna allow this, but I don't reveal what this women did.
Tell the people he needs to go to the dog, if he's fighting, like, man.
Now go ahead and peep it out. This is how our township runs. It's open, free for all.
So is that your birthday story? I wanna know what happened, I wasn't there, I wanna know what happened.
You should have been there, then. I think we should move along here.
Oh, you're stuck, Jeff, you're stuck.
This will be in the next weekend, you know?
Good, good.
Because Gary Stapp provided that, because you have a four and a half or two.
Alright, alright, we'll move on, we'll move on.
This, I'm gonna watch my side of trivial, dramatic stupidity.
Jeff, Jeff, do you have any other unfinished business?
Are we gonna move on to?
Jeff, do you have any other unfinished business?
Apparently, we are gonna discuss the sale of the equipment.
Do you have any other unfinished business?
That is a topic. That is a topic.
Okay. We sold two pieces of equipment, we got what we were asking out of, we sold brush off for 400, uh, blade for 200. The money was turned over to Jenny, so we put her, yeah. And then both sold to local Russians.
So you took the key off, the lock off of that, and where's that lock now?
Out there.
Which, this is to some brand name?
That fits the gas and the building over there. That key fits one brick wall.
Okay. Where's my copy of the key to the east side of the building where the lock is changed?
Let's start.
They take the locks over there.
I think it's locked on the inside too. It's the same lock. I think the only lock's on the inside.
How can it be the same lock as the mid one?
New door knob.
Did they kick the key and have a lock made to it? I don't think.
Where'd you guys put all the, put it on the back door?
I didn't have them do it on the back door.
I don't copy it either.
Because I don't have anything that opens on the inside.
There's some locks on the inside.
There are locks on the inside.
I need access from the outside too.
So you're gonna go to the west side, walk through it, and pop.
It's on the inside.
In case of emergency or something, you need to have a key to that door. And somebody purchased it, hasn't. Whoever purchased the lock, they come with keys. All right? You need one. Just put it in the box back here, so some people can all get access to that door.
I think you could put there a slight bolt to get, to get, to cut, and unlock it from the inside. Or it'll be actually, you know.
Common sense, I would, right?
Well, there are issues with that bolt. We've gone through that before with the address, and we were, if the proper occupancy permitted four years ago, that we were gonna do.
Well, why haven't you done anything about it, Jeff? All you do is just pump it on it. You do not do anything about it. Guess he, that he does take on the door, or, or?
That's your, that's your?
It's your bird.
Another story.
It's just the truth.
It's your truth, it's not, it's not reality.
I want it, have you seen that? Has anybody seen the reality? I haven't seen it.
Okay.
All right. I think it's on the front, but, but. Does anybody have any questions about that blade and brush off?
It's so. I don't have any. And they're gonna be paying all their money.
No. Still asking you, sir. We're still paying you.
You're lucky.
All right. New business. Yeah?
I just question why the wrote, uh, the press contracts didn't remove the agenda off here. It's just a private business, what's the update on that?
Last time I talked to Amy, she was still in the works with that. Last time I talked to, she was going to talk to Mr. Shackford, ZMI, and, uh, this advisor.
Well, the last time, uh, the board took an action a couple of months ago, by a vote, two to one.
He got the number.
To proceed to, um, cut a check, prosecutor office, and said she wanted, that we were pursuing. We moved that motion last month, the fiscal officer said she forgot the check, and I see it's not on here now, so. Has the check been cut in between meetings, or, you know, why don't we have that check tonight?
I talked to Jenny about it, she said the money was supposed to be allocated, the fund was supposed to be set aside, they didn't need a check now. So she thinks she has a cut check, but they don't want it now.
Oh, they changed their mind, or they said when they want it, or what?
The fund was supposed to be set aside, it's been wanted, set aside.
Right. So there's no timeframe on this?
When the prosecutor's office gets to it, solve it, or the prosecutor's office, yeah.
People get better.
When the prosecutor's office gets to it.
Do you like her phone number, Jeff?
When's the last time you spoke with her?
A few days, about that? A few days, five, a week ago.
Well, I asked, did it put on the agenda or unfinished business for next month? Because it needs addressed as it follows through the process.
And she usually does that by sending myself, yourself, Jenny, emails. Anything else? You guys, are you ready?
Of course, any questions? We're happy to get a little bit cold. He's gonna call.
Best they did not listen, actually.
Yeah, it'd be hot, just pick it up.
All right, well, just, just let us know when you get it.
I would like to know if he should put recording on Christine, if he thinks he can be. He's always a man, copies of this, copies of that, does he ever do anything on his own, side pass, or copies or anything? Jeff, do you?
Does this phone the comment?
Yeah. I would perfectly remember order on camera on.
I have a question, references audio crap, did you make motion one? Item one? Does he not have a camera over there? Now he has two things?
I didn't say one, I said all video recorded footage needs to be in the box, yeah. Needs to be over there, and it was made there.
And you stated that only the people up here can be recorded, he can't record us.
Right. Are you recording video?
Are you videoing?
This is a video camera.
Are you videoing?
Are you recording video?
Where does he go?
This is a public meeting.
You're not allowed to record us, a motion was made.
I'm allowed to.
No, you are not.
You are not!
Sunshine law, he is not allowed to video these people.
Now you are not.
Call the sheriff, he's not allowed.
He is not allowed. I know sunshine law.
Yeah, we're gonna stop the video, we're not gonna see.
It has nothing to do with the laws, sunshine laws are about public information.
You are not allowed to copy, to video these people in the meeting.
And it tries to also set.
The motion was made again!
Don't be so stupid.
Jeff?
Any motion that's made cannot supersede other laws.
That is the law. Jeff, you have the right to videotape the elected officials, okay?
It's a public meeting, and what happens here is a public.
We have the right to designate where the cameras have to be, okay? The cameras need to be over there in the designated area, okay?
I'll wait for your court order. You go ahead, you did your court order.
Stop the meeting, call the sheriff, this is wrong. He's not allowed to put us on the internet.
Oh, sheriff.
He's not, yeah.
He's still recording right now.
I'd stand behind him.
I'm turning back, turn me back, turn me back.
Just gonna stand behind him.
No, no, I'm standing right here.
Just stand behind me, that way you won't be on there. Stand.
We're dead.
I do, I want to finish it.
Hands on, how much attention you want? You ready? I'll move the motion and pay the bills.
No, we want to ask questions.
Off the audience, you can put around us all day long. That's why it needs to be in the designated area. And you agreed to it? Facing this one.
Everybody just get up, get behind me.
Call the sheriff. Violating the rules for our township. Call the sheriff.
You taking a picture of yourself now?
No, he's expecting a meeting.
Dan, call the sheriff.
I'm sorry, Doug. You gotta lead this meeting together, because one of them ran on a little gold. It's hard to work with, but I mean, you say you need to go with him.
Wait, mentally, oh.
Dan, are you gonna hold him accountable for what he is doing?
Yes.
You made a motion.
You better be able to hold it tough now.
And he is violating that motion.
I think the attorney leave this.
I didn't pull back.
They don't know what we're going through.
Hey, Benji, can we, can we contact the attorney, all of us in here? Really, suppose? Does he violate, is he fucking videoing? I understand when I was president, he was not, the video straight home for Christine, I know, right?
That's wrong.
That is wrong.
He's making a motion today!
Now you need.
I need some camera recording.
We're all popped, we're something gotta be done. Now somebody's gotta get some nerve.
Are you gonna turn the video camera off, or are you gonna put it designated there? Is that the question? Yes or no? Jeff? Can you hear me? Jeff, can you hear me? Jeff, can you hear me? Can you hear me, Jeff?
Call him.
Jeff? Can you hear me? Are you gonna even move the camera? Designated there, or not, he says. We're not, we're not finishing.
Call the sheriff.
Oh, sheriff, we have, we have bloody comments, we have the right to most, call the sheriff.
Don't put words in them.
Call the sheriff, Dan. Call the sheriff.
He had a good question, he didn't answer it. We'll set my hair to, you put that camera in that box.
One click, man. I think we should shut it again, Jeff.
He needs to call the sheriff. He needs to call the sheriff. Call the sheriff. Call the sheriff!
Call the sheriff!
So is that what you want, Jeff? You want attention, wrong, is that what you want? Is that what you're here for?
You're determining that.
Is that what you're here for?
That's all he's here for, is attention. I'm just saying, they're working on their size. Hey, Benji, every time you hear, you want to tell the sheriff, we don't want him. Call the sheriff, he's gonna stop you.
There was a motion made, a vote taken, and it was decided that, it was decided years ago, though, the camera need to be on hot. There was a motion made tonight, and a vote taken, with a yes. That that needs to be.
Just go ahead and call the sheriff. Hey, I'm telling you two something, each one of us, you're this fool.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead. Go ahead, because somebody walked up to Jeff?
Not like you was. But I should call him.
Be right back.
That's just, that's just. I'll be right back. I appreciate that.
Wait, Dan, give me your. You see what you're doing to the public, Jeff? You're forcing these people out.
We're not leaving, they're all standing out, he'll wait, uh, uh, for the meeting to come in.
A sudden presence.
You're forcing these people out.
Sheriff, sheriff's way, she's going from the front. He can settle.
Right. He can afford to people, okay?
You want to record the sheriff when he gets here? Clean it out, or? Okay, we don't think that's gonna be there online. They're gonna have to do it together. I mean, that's all, yeah? What I don't think we're doing is, is simple. Hey, thanks for your plug, you stay.
You still recording with your camera, Jeff? Hey, didn't we talk about this communication thing? Don't you drive your house, ask you this? Are you still recording on your little camera here in your hand? Yes, no, maybe? I'm not sure, I don't know what's going on.
Is it on? Usually they like it on.
Hey, Jeff? Can you hear me? Make sure you get this on the camera, you want to see how trustee acts, look at this, right here, huh?
Oh, you can get that out.
Yeah.
Yes, very well.
Yes, sir.
Completely understand, isn't it against the laws of the your team, the public, when they not want to be videoated?
There's a motion, okay? Beginning of this meeting, there was a motion made, vote taken, and passed.
Well, I already understand that, and going under.
Several years ago there.
Right to frame the speech.
Down here, go off them. Blue box.
Denied, he's videoated. Um, I'm here on the.
Well, are you going to call the police? Are you guys gonna put my poker in?
What?
With my driveway?
Check with county on that there, Bob. Because you're on a county road.
Well, I'm gonna kill the county.
I know, county, county will take care of it. Talk to them about going on the county road.
I can do it myself, because I have a turf.
Yeah, I would, I would talk to the county. Because, uh, I mean, we, we deal with it on the township route. But since you're on the county road, better.
I know.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Camera still on, Jeff?
Even though we're in our township, I'd love to help you out.
Hey, Jeff?
You know what I mean.
Jeff, you put that on your radio.
I know. Yeah. There we go.
It's not, he's got a lawsuit.
You'd rather be at home than on the street.
Not a lawsuit, he had another lawsuit.
Oh. It'd be all right, but.
Yes.
We're not too far. But now, on a county road, the county picks your hole, but.
I just want to make sure it's done right. You got half day to go. You put that poker in backwards, you know what I mean? There you go.
Yes, I made my own catches. It'll be all, yes, and I still get once every three months. Nine months, nine, three months. So, there, or, yeah, wait on someone, they're coming, I'm gonna, I'm gonna. Very good, they want to go. Three months. How you prepare on that? How you prepare on that? And a month before you get to go, I get paid once every three months. Yes, and you say, oh, no, but according to Mr. Corbinny, man, I'm getting fricked in my job.
You pinball.
You know?
That's one of my notes, monitor that, he's still been in there.
I don't care. He's wrong, and he knows it. My foot didn't hurt. Get that, that's for you, Mr. Corbinny. Love ya. First time. Moron. Cheater. See, I'm, I'm not even so hard now, I'm a resident.
Look at that, like in my life.
What? I have trust. Put that on record.
Oh, my gosh.
I have trust. Can't help it. Just like Mr. Corbinny and his medical issue. I have to get one until he gets out.
I'm gonna sit, no, I thought I had the, I said, I need camera.
I was making laughter, Jeff.
I know, you're like, yeah. Hey, Dad? You did pay, I'll be in a bunch of nights, I can't get that.
It's too good. But I really go out.
Tony, honey, who are you doing?
Chuck!
You don't have to go there.
You gotta call the sheriff.
Still recording Jeff? Hey Jeff? Jeffrey!
That's all right. Did you hear what Jeff?
Yes.
Now you wanna talk to me? Now do you wanna talk to me?
No.
Now do you wanna talk to me? Are you still recording with your camera? Answer my question, are you still recording? So you're recording?
Motion was made, you're not allowed to record.
Everybody heard that, right? He is still recording.
Yes, he said he's still recording. No, but he puts that on the internet, it'll have that part out. You do not have the right when a motion was made.
It's not in the box factor.
The motion was made to put it in the box.
And you don't understand that.
And you were not allowed to record the audience, only the trustees, the people at the table, which would be the clerk, or if they wanted the zoning out there, shit could get recorded up there.
Plus all camp has to be in the box.
In the box. But he chooses, it's not you, just like he chose to remove the, the merry-go-round. He wanted to do it, so he did it. He wants to record the public, so he's recording the public.
I have every right to record what happens at this meeting.
No, you don't have the right to record us here in the audience. The motion was made.
Was there, or wasn't there a motion made?
Public meeting, and not in spirit.
The motion was made, you are not allowed.
Any motion made cannot supersede.
Yes, it can. The motion was made. It can.
Trustees can run the meeting, and they can say... There was also a motion made six, seven years ago, that all video recording from the meeting to remain, if it doesn't...
In the box. This is the second time that it's been motioned. The second time, not the first, second.
Is he an artist, the first time?
Yes, he was. He was doing the recordings. This is a great way for you to get re-elected in two years. Oh, we have a guy that he can, um, Mr. Corbinny, James will do it, he wants him. Because he is gone.
He is the Buddha.
He did James' vote in Green Tower. Hey Ben, how long do you have to be not to be a boy anymore? I'm thirty, thirty years old, you're pretty much a man.
Yeah, I think it comes after thirty.
Thirty? Did you hit thirty?
Oh, yeah.
Damn. So you're still a boy. Grown man has children. Oh, damn, you're half a boy, Green Tower, you're probably not older. The boy, is that child sitting right there in the red shirt? Oh, yeah, his name is Jeff Corbinny. He's a baby. He can't follow the rules. I bet your mommy's real proud of you, bitch.
You guys need to get a handle on him. You are the three, you just didn't charge on him, he ain't on you. Somehow, some way, whether you like the people or not. You need to get a handle on him. Now, I got more important things to do. Thanks for coming.
He's two farmers. They live next to each other. They grew up as kids, their parents owned both farms. When they got older, the parents bought the parents' farms. And they used to help each other farm, they stand out in the field one day, just talking about farming, and, uh, one bird flew over. And this one bird took a drop, he couldn't follow his head, you know?
He's gonna pack it up before he shoves it.
Run down and say, yeah, I'm not done. But anyway, one farmer, he said, you ain't gonna be the security? He said, no, that bird's already in next county. I thought, I thought I shared that with you.
The grain? All these things have to be, right? Right? The merry-go-round was removed.
Jeff's choice changed.
Jeff is major reporter on, on the audience, because Jeff chooses to... And he offered our merry-go-rounds, a metter championship, without anybody's permission.
Okay?
He does what he wants to do. Not with the people, but... Not with the other elected officials who are trying to work with them on it. He won't answer anybody's questions. He has to make work, and people say, I like your costume, why can't you make the copies prior to coming in? He knows everybody's supposed to have it. I make copies, when I have a report to turn in, everybody gets a copy. Why can't he do the same thing? But he chooses to make a copy of this township. Trying to make everybody else sort of like their bad guys, it's him.
Yeah, I know.
Wait, did, did you use it?
No, not yet.
Did they got it? Nobody worked on it.
Yeah, and, uh, I haven't even got, haven't even started the duck yet. We're going to go ahead and get my first fix.
Yeah, for here, so. I agree with you there. I think I was actually turning it, I don't know, I don't know how I looked at it. I think he was absolutely right that day.
They're coming up to Trump?
Yeah, uh, no, it's the... He talked about that, I think you're absolutely right.
Hundred?
Oh, my dear Trump, yeah. Uh, I have to, well, my, my... They didn't have your Trump yet? Oh, no, that's my problem. I heard you said, uh, current prime. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I would've been nice enough to know that too. I'd, I'd have been nice enough to know that too.
You may go hide up in somebody.
Still working, you know?
Oh, yeah. You got a hamburger, hamburgers. You've done hamburgers. Oh, big one, yeah. Oh, lord. Newspaper. And editor. I had some, Ray. We had some, yes. Uh, yeah, I was up in, uh, Farmburg and that, my son called me, called me, I need to go have... In my hamburger, I can't believe it, sure, they're so awful, I'm actually...
Still recording the public, Jeff? Jeff? Hey Jeff?
I don't think you hear it.
Why don't you ask if his camera's in the blue air down? Make the color light, I don't have to tell the state.
It's getting cold in here.
Is it thunder?
That's sure.
Sheriff's here!
I've seen more than I've seen. Yeah. Haven't seen that for a long time.
I seen one yesterday, that, that dark, that would be heaven from over.
Yeah.
I got a baby when somebody's standing there for me, but the next morning, it started out like that.
I bet we got about forty reps.
Babies are...
He's got one very strange, but just like, he'll run around, he'll be... Here comes the red. You've all seen the funniest thing. Dog remind that, that... They chase this cat, and then turn it up, and just run into the cat, and then run out there. The cat's chasing the dog.
He came out that cat.
Yeah, he'll, he'll set the litter, and the cows will work on it, but he'll chase him, and then, like, then the cows start chasing the dog.
Two things, number one, at the request, that they do not want. The audience recorded, and advise that recording something has a designated spot. I believe it violates my constitutional rights when people are in a public meeting, at a public meeting, I have every right to document that, sir. And they want, if you can't follow the law, there are rules, they want to be removed. It was, hey, you just speak unhappily. Board trustees. Among board trustees, uh, group.
Let's take a vote.
That's not how, that's not how laws and meetings are... I'm, I'm just doing what they're asking you to do, okay? So if you wanna report, they have no problem with it, they don't want the audience recorded. If you wanna send a recording device over there to the chair.
He does, he does, over here.
There's a designated spot right there. I'm not disturbing the meeting, I'm not stopping anyone's conversation.
Yes, he is.
If you have a law you're relying with, to show me that I'm in violation of any kind of law, please provide that to me.
Well, publicly, every single person in here that you're videoing, would have to give you authorization to video them. Otherwise...
Can you show me that law, please?
Oh, I can absolutely do that, but you're gonna step outside for us to do that.
Sure.
Reggie? I'm all signed. I told you get to, I told you all get to.
Okay, if, if I get on the air, and I see me on there, what am I here? See, I, I know that, but I was told there's ninety days. What do I do?
They don't, they don't, they don't vote for that, so you have to, you have to vote for that. To base that, well, I did, I did, I took that, you think, and all of us, and so, and all, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't know those, I don't, I don't vote for either one.
No, no.
I don't vote for either one. You look at that, I, that, you look at that, vote for that, everybody, you know, whatever, remember that. Never tell, never tell, never tell anything else. So, everyone, that's, 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 that's.
Well, I can't really have it.
Hello, Grandma. I'm trying, uh, it'd be two, quarter, two fifty. Just, you know, for the thinking, no, no, and, 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 so they know. But, uh, I was up against it, I got an order, fifty, so you know. But I want a food, you see, all bacon, beef, no meat. All this, two big dogs, better than a food.
You got somebody else all around you.
I just wanted, I just wanted to be a.
Lay it, four, four down there, four. Oh, lay it at a dollar ninety-nine, a quarter. I'm afraid, just damn it, yeah. Four, four ninety-nine, man. Sit around. A little, I'm sorry, I'm taking a little strawberry. Got strawberry, my friend, yeah, we'll do that tomorrow. Then we'll start, like, that, that.
My glory, did you, you know what I'm doing this year? Yeah, I don't have to hold.
I don't want to get down, down, down.
I shouldn't leave my meeting. Yeah, I'm all, stay here for the meeting, but I don't want to get.
Seven years down the road. I don't know. She's got little, eyes up there, saying so long.
I didn't know, with command, I got five, I mean, hell, I couldn't, built some hands up.
Two hundred seventy-five. They're seven, right down the, they're not scared.
I talked to her a lot, the homies.
Ain't no one. Never seen him once, I didn't.
You ever seen that? The guy, he's, right, he ends up, that, memory, that's where he used to go, Milwaukee, State, Miami, Delaware.
Yeah, my health ain't better, I was right out of Austin, that week, I'm, I, that route forty-seven, was part of these ones.
That'd be alright. I'd be upset, I would be upset.
What do you think?
I was learning watching TV.
It's tough to get in dark, you don't have any hell.
We got half a shift today. You know, back when I was in the hospital, where I lived, they said we were fine, we had, we had, we had, we had. And then I heard, I lost it.
I don't think I did that.
You don't get it.
I tried.
Yeah, I did a lot.
I tried to, too.
You know, I didn't start nothing until the last meeting, they credited that, I was, I just took it, I didn't say nothing. Yeah, the last meeting, it's hard, giving time to review it, I kept calling for two weeks, if we're done reviewing it, I'm like, I know the process, email, I've been, they know what's, I know what. I don't have email, so Jenny printed it out for me.
Hey, we have a walk, we have a walk.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the talk, or not, yeah. Yeah, just a record of talk, just that you can.
Yeah.
His precious, he, he need more, I need that. Now, see, let me show you. See? See, I, they need more, I need that.
Still trying to aim it on the public?
Do we get side points?
What do you do with all them crying stuff?
Some what?
All them big crying stuff.
Crying stuff.
Crying stuff.
Alright, Dan. The hole in the battery.
Just four?
Yeah. There you go, from the. I always, I always do that. I swear I made them jack them.
He got my head.
Why, they like yours, you shoot at it. When I quit, I worried about it.